Meeting of the City of Galt Council duly open for transaction for business. Donna, will you please give the- make the- take the call?
Payne?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Raboy. Meredith.
All right. At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to the city attorney to disclose any reportable actions from our closed section. Closed section?
No reportable action.
No reportable, thank you. Um, at this time, I'd like everyone to, uh, stand for the silent prayer, which will be followed by Cub Scout troop, uh, A-PAC eighty-four, and also, uh, for the flag, but also, if you would, keep in your prayers, uh, Rancho Cordoba Officer Lawrence Canfield, who passed away this week. Keep him and his family in your prayers, if you would, please.
Please remove all non-scouting headgear. Color guard attention. Color guard to prepare to post colors. Post colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. True. Color guard dismissed. Please be seated.
Donna, can you read the video statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the government affairs channel on the Comcast and Shore West cable system. Tonight's meeting can be seen on channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday at nine o'clock AM. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Do we have any agenda approvals, additions, or deletions?
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to pull item six for some word change and put it on the regular agenda.
I'd like to pull D three for some comment. Any others?
None.
Uh, where did you want to put, uh, D six in, uh, under the regular?
It doesn't matter. Wherever you feel comfortable.
All right. No others? All right. All right, Darrell. See, subject matter. Uh, what's this? D three, subject Culture and Recreation Fund?
Yeah, do you want to do the-
Do- yeah, actually, uh, public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Uh, just one, Ruth de Brute.
I am here tonight to- my name is Ruth de Brute, and I live in Galt, and I am here tonight to thank Councilman Tim Raboy for all that he has done in this-
Donna, I'm sorry, Ruth, can you pull that closer to you?
I'm here tonight to thank Tim Raboy for all that he has done for the City of Galt, for his devotion, for his, uh, being dedicated to the cause, for all the time he has spent away from his family, and for all the years that he has given to the community, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wanted to speak? Okay. So we'll move forward to the consent calendar, D three, Culture and Recreation Funds.
Yeah, if, uh, State Manager, if you could just give folks a brief overview, what's being proposed here?
I'm gonna let Inez tell you from the financial standpoint.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, good evening, council members. Basically, what you have before you is that, as council is aware, the Culture and Recreation Fund has been struggling to, um, maintain a positive position over the last fiscal years. We've been addressing revenue enhancements, revenue changes, some expenditure reductions, and, um, the fund still seems to be in a deficit position. Currently, two amounts that remain outstanding are some, um, support services to the general fund for, see, a couple of years back in fiscal year two thousand two-three and two thousand three-four, those amounts totaled two hundred...excuse me, that actual amount is four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. We are asking that council, basically, recognize that those are just general government support services and not ask for those amounts to be repaid from the Culture and Recreation Fund to the general fund. Additionally, there was an amount in excess of a million dollars that was used for the construction of Chaboya, and we had intended in the staff report that that amount would be repaid from the capital reserve parks fund. However, in review of the appropriate uses of that fund, construction of Chaboya is an appropriate use, so we were saying that instead of it being a loan, that it'd just be a direct, um, expense of that fund. So with that, this evening, we'd like council to take those two actions, and it would basically assist the Culture and Recreation Fund. It has no impact on the other two funds because those amounts are really not classified as current resources available.
Okay. And based on Ted, on the, uh, budget you submitted to us in June, and on page seventeen, anyone who has it handy and wants to refer to it, we had already budgeted for the oh-six fund for the oh-nine year from general reserve, a million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and five dollars, and for the oh-nine, oh-ten, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, sixty-four, which I know we've already approved, this is on top of that. The only reason I bring this up is because we're gonna talk about some other spending things later in the budget, and I just want to keep in all of our minds and the people paying these fees, these are the kind of deficits and these are the kind of dips into the city's reserves we're having to make to continue providing services. So I will- I will recommend support and adoption of the recommended item, but I just thought, given the- the dollars we're talking here that Inez has just, uh, mentioned, on top of the reserves we've already freed up, you know, over two point two million dollars, that I- I know it's high in your knowledge, but I want to keep in everyone's that these are the kind of deficits we're running.
Yeah, one- just one point of information. I think we need to separate the general fund debt from the improvement debt. This was anticipated it would be paid back from a capital account, which didn't happen, and- and so the funds are a little bit different. I'm not saying that one- one deficit's better than another, but it actually is, and the general fund deficit would be a much more concern than the capital deficit.
Okay. So with that, I'll move the item and staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. So moved.
Thank you.
Okay. And the rest of the consent calendar. Did you want to do D six? Um, we can do it anytime. Do you want to do D six now?
Yes, I'll turn it over to Paula to tell you the word change, and, uh, it's minor, but we need that council approval.
Um, actually, I want the change to the job description and the, um, other changes to be in effect, to go into effect once our current incumbent retires, not while he's still working here. So that was an error, but I didn't make that clear in the report, so that would be the one change, um, to the report, that these recommended changes will go into effect once our current building official retires. Any questions?
Where did you explain that in here? Where do we need to make that correction?
I think it would really just be for the record, that we will know that, um, that's when the changes will take effect.
Okay. I- I appreciate the recommendation you folks have made here, agree with that, but I also recommend it shouldn't affect how... So I'll- I'll move staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I know you've been called a lot of times a bit incumbent, that's...
[laughing]
Okay. And recommended action for the remainder of the consent calendar. So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Three zero. Any presentations? I don't believe we have any. Move down to schedule matters, um, uh, subject matter, public hearing, uh, scheduled matters, uh, public hearing on state funding for the police department, staff report. Chief, uh...
Okay. Um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, um, we are here on this topic to, um, conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed use of supplemental law enforcement service funding, known as COPS funding. Um, we want to approve the adoption, uh, approve adopting a resolution appropriating the funds to continue the STEP program. Um, these funds currently from the state, uh, pay for the one salary of the police department that is, um, assigned to that program at this time. Um, obviously, this is an ongoing thing we've done this year after year, so I won't read all the staff report, but this- this funding was in severe jeopardy this year, the state of California's budget crisis, um, this thing was on and off the table more times than, uh, you can imagine. It was finally approved and funded, and so we will be getting the full hundred thousand dollars that we got last year from the state to fund this position. Um, that's the last I've been told, in case something else changes, I don't know, but, um, in order to get the money and accept it, we have to have the public hearing, and the council has to approve it. So that's- that's what we're here to do tonight.
Could you, um, give a short rundown about what the STEP program is about?
The, uh, the STEP program has been, um, has become part of the detective division of the police department with some specialized duties. We have one, uh, employee that does nothing but gang intervention and gang investigation, and a second employee, um, is- is works on drugs and some of the other catch-all positions that, uh, the crimes that we get, um, over the- over the course of the- the business week, um, that are outside of what the two regularly assigned detectives can do. Um, they both work plainclothes pretty frequently, they both spend time doing, uh, various assignments like, um, shoulder tap for juveniles who buy alcohol, um, undercover drug operations, and then a lot of gang interdiction, so that's what they're doing.
And this is gonna be fully funded from the state?
State pays this, uh, has paid this, uh, COPS grant every year for the last twenty-four years. Um, since I became chief, we've applied it to a salary, um, and so it frees up some money from the general fund, so we don't have to pay the employee from the general fund. Um, we almost lost the funding this year, but it was the closest it's ever come to being impacted, um, and in the end, um, they- they funded it, so we're still there.
Good.
Okay. Open for public hearing? Do we have anybody, uh, to talk on it? Is there anybody who'd like to speak on the subject matter? Okay. Close the co- public hearing. Comments from council?
No, I agree with what the chief had to say, and I know we're gonna talk more budget, but, uh, the governor's proposals for the special session, he's called for the, uh, assembly, and he's calling them back in pretty much immediately. It is one of the items listed, and they're proposing reducing it along with booking fees and juvenile justice programs, and so I think it's very much in our best interest to lock that funding in while we can, 'cause the likelihood it'll be there later, I think, is not good right now. So I move staff's recommendation, and COPS program and the funding's really helped our community.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Three zero. Okay. So, uh, next subject matter, uh, under scheduled matters, we got Nuevo Vision Academy for the charter school agenda, but I've gotten a letter here from Julia Zinger-Toll, and she's, uh, requesting continuation, and simply on this, she's just summarize it- to summarize it, she's requesting that we, uh, put off, uh, the hearing on the- on the request for an appeal, uh, to be continued at a later date, which we will do. So, that's continued, that's gonna be pulled.
We were gonna open the public hearing, though.
Do we still want to open for public hearing, even though it's a continued?
And what staff requests is, once you open it, we'll actually continue it to the next, uh, council meeting. The reason that we want to open it is if there is someone here that mistakenly thought that there would be hearing, they need to give their input in the- in the hearing process.
Okay. All right, so then, let's open it for public hearing, then. Is there anybody who'd like to speak on the subject matter? Do we have any questions? No speakers? Okay. All right, we'll close the recommendation, continue it before you close up. Is there a representative from the organization here tonight? All right. Here. Oh, you're right. We're continuing here. Thank you, Darrell.
Sure. I want to have a chance to ask some questions.
I'm Ernie Silva, I'm representing, uh, the Community Resource Project, which is the, uh, nonprofit that is, uh, proposing the school.
Okay.
And we had just asked to, uh, hold this over till there's a, uh, because of the importance of the community, till there's a full- full council will be present.
Okay. Um, if I can ask, and if you're not prepared to answer any of these, that's fine, 'cause I don't know what you were expecting this evening, but from the beginning of this program, and even more recently, and this is my impression, so correct me if you see it differently, this program's had a history of missed dates, and to me, this is another one this evening, perhaps for a perfectly good reason, but it would appear to me to be unfortunate, given all the dates that have been missed leading up to this for a variety of things. That leaves, in my mind, a continued state of sort of confusion about this project, and a doubtfulness about the sincerity of how many people in the community are supporting this project. The fact that there's no one here speaking as a council member is unusual to me, 'cause usually, people who want a project are here to speak. Now, maybe they were all told, "Don't come tonight," and that's why.
I did speak with Mr. Anderson twice on this, and we kept the witnesses from coming because we understood it, we put over. We'll be glad to bring people from the school.
So if you convey back to your people, when they do come, one council member would like a little less confusion, a little more certainty, 'cause this project seems to have lacked that, and it doesn't build a lot of confidence, and- and to ask for special consideration, if you will, to use the site where they are, and parking, and everything else, to gain the support, at least my vote, it's gonna need more clarity than it's had to date, so I just-
We'll have people from the school here to- to speak with you about that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that would be continued to December second meeting, is that correct? That would be the next available meeting.
Okay, so it's continued to December second?
What's that? Uh, okay.
All right.
Do I need a motion to continue?
All right, let's make a mo- do I have a motion to continue then?
I move that we continue this item through December second meeting.
I'll second that. Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Votes have it? Okay. And then we'll move down to the regular calendar, city manager's office, subject, uh, building permit specialist position. Mr. Anderson, staff report.
Mr. Mayor and council, actually, I'm looking forward to this, 'cause I can bring out some other issues that would- the impact, not only this, but the future budget. We knew that when we were looking at this position, that in all probability, the council would take a look at it. As a matter of fact, that's the reason that I requested an itemized report from the department. What we're attempting to do at this point in time in the city, and we've had some pretty good information in regards to sales tax, and I'm gonna have, uh, Inez later give you a little bit update on property tax, with everybody around us looking at this year's budgets and next year's budgets, and seeing that there's some difference, we feel very fortunate, because so far this year, our budget's gone pretty well. But, eh, not knowing what the future is, I held a special meeting with my department heads about two weeks ago, to try and look at other ways that we could try and reduce some of the deficit that we've funded, and/or to develop a fund where at the end of the year, if we come out all right this fiscal year, we would have some reserve in order to handle next fiscal year if something took place. One of the first things that we did is, is that I've had all department heads, uh, reduce their maintenance and operation budgets by five percent. Those monies will actually be taken out of the budget and set aside in a special account. The other thing that we've done is, is that we presently have three positions that are frozen, and any position that comes up has to go through the administration's review before we'll approve any additional hiring in the future, so that if there are other savings for positions, we will try and do those. All overtime is restricted, except in emergencies. All, uh, travel and workshops, unless it is absolutely necessary, and I've allowed the department heads to make the determination of necessary, eh, if they're not necessary, then they won't be done. What I'm trying to do, and I think we should feel very, very fortunate, is I'm trying to build a small reserve, so that if in the next fiscal year, something changes different than we thought, we actually have some- some money in order to operate with. We've also got another list, which means if it got worse than what we think, there are other things that we're gonna work on to see where, and not, we could- we could get some savings. So we're truly trying to be proactive in order to set the city up, because we don't- as I indicated in the two-year budget process, I think we're okay for two years, but what about the third year? And what about the fourth year? And what about, lo and behold, the fifth year, if something like that took place? I'm amazed that when you look at the newspapers, all of the changes, where everyone around us keeps getting worse, and worse, and worse. Now, council received a sales tax update not too long ago, indicated that the one quarter, we had about a six percent increase. Uh, Inez may have some information in regards to property tax, and then we'll get back to the position. Do you have any update on the property tax form?
Yes. Actually, I was requested by city manager to review some of the tax file information that was just released by the county, and in looking at the information, it looks like we have estimated, um, fairly closely to the information that was released by the county. Um, so that's definitely good news. The- one of the, I guess, benefits of adopting our budget somewhat late in the year was that our information that was provided to council was more, um, current than what other cities adopted. Some of them, um, may use information shared back in March, April, and May. We actually used information as, um, late as June, so that's probably good news for us. But we don't know at this point what the impact will be on the delinquency. We know what the role reflects, we know what the tax bills look like, but we don't know what the delinquency rate may be. We typically receive about fifty-three percent of our tax collections in the month of December under the cash advance. Um, some property owners actually pay the full amount of their tax bill, they do not do the fifty-fifty, they pay most of it, um, or all of it in December. So typically, our collection rate has been about fifty-three percent of the total amount collected. So come December, we'll be able to give council an update on that collection rate, but at this point, we feel pretty good about where the role is based on our estimate on property taxes. But if council has any specific questions or other questions related to revenues, um, I'd be more than glad to try to address those.
Inez, uh, the reassessment of properties, are we gonna see any kind of impact on us in that area?
Well, yes. Actually, there were approximately twenty percent countywide that were reassessed, um, and so that definitely did have an impact to the City of Galt. We did look at that, and if you look at our property taxes, you will actually see a decrease in our property tax revenue estimates in the current fiscal year as compared to last year's budget estimate. So we did recognize that, there were some parcels within our community that were, uh, reduced because of the reassessment. Um, again, it affects typically some of the property values in the current, in the two-thousand roll, um, so it does affect our city, but those, um, items were taken into account in our estimates.
Okay. Any other questions?
Now, let me get to the permit specialist issues. If you look at the memo that I wrote, you'll understand why we tried to continue the position. I'm not gonna fall on the sword if the council feels that, yeah, if they'd like to save that and try and save some money, but I think we may be a little short-sighted for two reasons. Number one is if I cut that one out, then, uh, between, uh, planning, zoning, and building, I'll have three frozen positions in one department. It's small as it is. Number two is, is that the system that this individual has to- to learn, only one other person knows it with- with the new software thing, so that if something happened there, we would have no one else that could run the program. And if the council, eh, I hope we never want to get back to where we had the problem, where we couldn't, uh, uh, service the permits when people came in, we were always getting complaints that we weren't fast enough, and there was never one any- anyone out in the front, and we actually remodeled it so that we could make sure that we had one person out there, uh, at any one time, so that we could serve the permits. If you have any detailed information for the department heads of that, they can answer that, but in our best judgment, at this time, it was not a position that we would- we thought that would make sense to freeze.
Question?
Do you guys have any questions?
I have a couple, yes.
Go ahead. I've got four pages, so...
[laughing] I'll have that. How long have we had this- this, um, position in our department?
Um, we've had two permit specialists for about a year and a half now. Before that, we had a clerk typist, uh, at the front counter, and then one permit specialist. When, um, we had, uh, an employee leave, we came back to council, um, and requested that that clerk typist position be filled with a second permit specialist for the reasons that are identified in the report, in that we would have overlap in the ability for two individuals to serve the same function, um, and actually, there's a- there's been a complete division of duties out there, and we've included some information in order to better serve the public, and then the remodel took- was also part of that. That was a whole program that the council wanted, and the underlying issue there was is one, uh, that we could effectively, um, uh, permit, uh, permits, service the public, uh, i- in the most efficient and cost-effective manner. Um, the, um, the two positions, uh, alternate different duties depending upon, you know, on a weekly basis and sometimes on a monthly basis, and there's a whole- whole breakdown in the staff report on that. But it's been about a year and a half since we've had that, and it has worked very well.
But there was no increase in total personnel, just a job description change.
This person, are they able to, um, issue a permit, something simple like a heating, air conditioning change out? Is that something that they-
That's what these two positions do.
They can actually, you know, do the plan check and-
Right over the counter. These are done over the counter. And that was one of the- one of the- with the- we've got the new permit- permitting system put in place, um, we had the permit, second permit specialist, uh, put in place, did the remodel on the office, and the whole underlying issue was, if you recall, there was concerns about being able to issue over-the-counter permits. That has enabled the department to do just that, uh, and, you know, like water heaters, air conditioners, uh, those types of things. And I think one of the big cons- one of the misunderstandings is that to issue a- a- a permit for a house takes the same amount of work effort and the same amount of steps to issue for a water heater, and we issue over three hundred, close to four hundred miscellaneous permits per year, um, and those are all done by the permit specialist.
So if a person is, um, building a home, and they bring their plans in, it doesn't- they don't have to be looked at by an engineer or anybody else?
No. The- the- the permit specialist at that point then identifies, makes sure that the package is complete, identifies the routing to, if it goes to outside plan check, inside-out plan, uh, plan check, uh, engineering upstairs, uh, planning downstairs, as well as building. All the plan check has to take place, once the check, once all of- all the departments have signed off, goes back to the permit specialist, she then generates the permit.
Okay. So she doesn't do the- the checking for-
Oh, no, she does-
Say, uh, sheer or-
Oh, no. She's not a- she's not a, uh, she's not a qualified engineer in that sense, uh, but then she does all the, uh, fee estimates, uh, notifies the applicant that the permit is ready to be picked up.
Then does she also go over the requirements for each one of those permits? Is there a checklist, uh?
Yeah. They- they review all of the applications with the- with the individuals at the counter, answers questions as it relates to, you know, what is- what the required submittal- or what the submittal requirements are for the various types of permits. You know, and if there's something that is beyond their skill level, then obviously, they would contact someone else in the office, whether it be planning or building.
Okay. Your turn.
I asked this to be put on, um, because back on the night we had the mayor's, uh, dinner and board, I came over to pick up my mail, and Tim was here, and we were talking at the counter, and I went in to get a soda in the break room and saw that there was a posting for a position. There's a- there's a variety of positions, and right now, there's probably five or six hanging up there, from maintenance workers to lateral transfer police officers and- and whatnot. And it just occurred to me, and I chatted with Tim a little bit at the time, you know, when do we stop hiring, so to speak, and you've said you've sort of stopped hiring after this position philosophically. And- and the more I've looked into it, and the more now, since I've read the staff report and stuff, I think it isn't so much about this one job. I mean, you could say that I'll let so-and-so go if you let me have this person type of thing, and I don't know that we own auction jobs like that, but it's more philosophical about the whole thing you've already talked about, and some other things I'm gonna comment on. So I really put it on philosophically for all of us, all spending, not just this one job, spending period, but jobs in particular for the issues on here tonight. And one of the letters in the- And one of the letters in the staff report from Kurt's department said they were astounded that the council would even consider not filling this position, which I appreciate their enthusiasm and support for the position, but I'm astounded, anyone would be astounded in this economy, that we wouldn't think about not filling any more positions. So I wish Tim was here actually, because all of us on the council know that Tim's been better at it than anybody, and this is the last one he sent me anyway, of sending us articles about cities who are in financial crisis or failing up to like the city of Valle who went bankrupt. The last one he sent me was from the Mercury News. This had to do with the city of Gilroy and I won't read the whole thing, you can guess the lead up. But the fiscal bomb hit the city when their council voted to fire six, one sixth of all their employees. Not, not, don't hire one more, they fired a sixth of everybody working for the city. That's how bad it is. And that wasn't just restricted, that's police, firefighters, it's across the board. So Tim's given us a good reminding of how serious that is. But certainly not alone, and I think probably all of us get, and this is a quarterly report, and I don't know if you can see the line, but it's going down seriously. And this is our region, not just our city. This is Sacramento region compiled by the Sacramento regional business forecast. And it shows everything in the region, the state, the Bay Area and the United States in that downward spiral. And then they project where it's going to go from here. And this is today, and if you can see this, it keeps going down, they don't project it coming up for any time soon. So again, those were my concerns in the spending of the city. Then as I alluded to before, the governor released his emergency actions for the state budget problems. And you probably all know our state's eleven point two billion dollars in the hole and very few places to make it up from. And I'll just touch on the cuts that are still coming, not the cuts we've already seen, the ones that are going to come yet. Prop ninety-eight is going to be cut, funding for schools, two point five billion dollars. Higher education, our state universities and the UC system will be cut, one hundred and thirty-two billion and sixty-six, or not billion, million and six-six million respectively. People receiving social security will be cut, three hundred and forty-eight million dollars. Cal works will be cut for those people who are out of work or looking to get back to work, cut by ten percent, two hundred and seventy-three point nine million dollars. State employees, Don, you probably know this already, they will be required to take a one-day furlough each month as well as to forfeit two holidays that they've been enjoying up until this time. And this will equal three hundred and twenty million dollars. Public safety grants, we already talked about cops, luckily ours looks like it's going to be okay. And then Medi-Cal recipients, their benefits will be reduced, forty-one million dollars in the oh eight, oh nine and a hundred and twenty-nine point nine in the oh nine, ten. And so I agree with Ted's comments that we may have quote enough money to hire this person right now. And I know we do, that is not a debate, but I agree with you, what will next year be and beyond that? So you can probably guess, I don't intend to support, even though you did a good staff report as to why this person's needed. And I'm sorry, we lost Kristen and based on the report and the letters, I'm not sure how the department's going to run without her, but she obviously was well appreciated over there. But some, some of the information that's in the report, I feel you kind of oversold the position, quite frankly. And from a management style, I would have liked to have seen, I appreciate all the memos you sent us from all the people who are in here, but nowhere in the staff report is there anything that says, if council still doesn't want to hire a physician, this is how we'll solve the problem. All I have is a bunch of memos that the problem can't be solved without hiring the physician. And at a time like this, I would ask for more.
Let me have a little dialogue with Darrell. See, one of the things is that when, when we first looked at it, we thought that we were going to have a retirement and we were going to have one physician replaced. Then all of a sudden, the individual that was going to replace is now going to Montana. And so you'll actually have an additional person who won't be in that department. And the question that, that we had to deal with is how far down do we want to go into that small department in order to make that type of cut?
Sure.
And, and I think any position from here on out, we'd have to go through the same process to try and decide, do we do it or don't we? I don't think you want a blanket thing that says any position that comes up, you don't want to replace it because some may be critical. I mean, you know, you don't have to make that decision.
Yeah, it's not what I'm proposing tonight, by any means. So I'll, I'll tell you what I'd like to see as we move forward for this or any other position, as I say, is, is more of a staff report that says, given what we're facing, if council doesn't want to take this course of action, here's how we'll handle the problem, whatever that might be. And, and some of the things in the report, like I say, just are contradictory to me. And one of which was Ted, you, Al, and I think a third person, or Mr. Risk, all talked about the fact that these people do permits. Two of you, Al and Ted, said it's no difference in your staff report, doing a permit for anything, which was, I guess, from water heaters to swimming pools to a home, then a commercial project. But Mr. Risk said, in fact, commercial products are far more complex, which I agree with Mr. Risk, at least at a gut level. And I think I get what you were trying to say in general, but I, I think you did yourself a disservice. I know you're trying to make us see that you had a couple hundred permits for water heaters and pools and those kind of things. But I, I just didn't get, if I will, that point. I, I think the fact that you've got commercial projects are far more complicated. The other concern I had was that, it was said in here by one of the employees, that people are standing at the counter, three, three lines are ringing and somebody's waiting in the lobby. And I wouldn't want that occurring. And again, I come from a private industry where we have to make a profit. And if I, as the vice president, have to answer the phones at the front desk, I promise you, that's what we do. And if I got to go to lunch, the president of the company will answer the phones, if that's what we have to do. And I imagine anyone in here owns their own business, I can tell you, I used to clean the toilets at my dad's business because that's what we did. And it just wasn't that, well, that's not my job, I'm, I'm the owner's son, I don't have to clean the toilet. So I know you guys have a team, I know you're working on it, but when I see in a staff report that phones are left ringing and people are left in the lobby, all the way up to Ted, if you've got to go over there, and I, I, I know that, I don't want to hear that you're never in your office because you're at the counter over there, but whether it's Kurt or Sandra or Chris or whoever it is, answer the phone. I mean, that, right now, those are the times we're in. And that's why I say, to me, it's a different, different view from a management style than just this one position. So I've got other comments like that, I, I think I'd be beating a dead horse to go on, I think you get my point. One recommendation, and you brought it up, is that there's only one person in the city right now who knows how to operate that software. I would say that needs to be addressed very quickly. If Kurt doesn't know how to operate it, let's get him trained. If Sandy doesn't know how to operate, let's get her trained. Because if that one person leaves, I agree, I don't want no one in, in the city know how to do it. Again, at my company, we all know how to operate the software, at least enough to operate it, I, I'm not the fastest by any means. So I'll leave it at that. My recommendation is that for now at least, we wait till Aines's December numbers come in, we'll see what that looks like. We'll see what the governor does at his level, what that's going to do to us. And, and I would not move forward at this time and, and fill this position. And I don't know to the incumbent, in your staff report, you said you may be retiring. Is that, and you don't, if you don't want to discuss that here, that's fine, but part of the presentation had to do with replacing you and I was surprised your staff report used the word may, so I didn't know if that's, is or may.
Well, it's going to happen, I just haven't put it in writing to the exact date.
Okay.
But that's forthcoming.
Okay, so to that as well, let, let's just say you work till next March or next June, then we won't be as short as the staff report reflects. We'll have one more person than it implied, so again-
And it may very well be by the end of the year.
So again, I would for now hold off. If we do determine this has to be filled, we can take the action at that time. But my, my recommendation would be, and my motion would be, that tonight, we not fill this position.
You know, I, I agree, I, I share the same concerns because when I first saw this, the first thing that came to mind was the economics, the, the economy and the situation that the state and the federal government and so many other cities are in currently. So first thing I did when I read this is, I was concerned about, you know, the condition of the city in coming years. And I know that currently staff is looking at our projections for the next two to three years and that's still need to be looked at. And I know when we created this position, it was an issue that service had to be increased and back then, you know, we didn't have the same circumstances that we have currently. Kurt, I just have a question for you, how many positions in your department have we frozen so far that we have not replaced?
Uh, one in the planning department, there will be again, as of December twelfth, one in the building department, and then this would be the third.
And this would be the third one?
That's correct.
And then, and we wouldn't be looking to replace this one again until, what, six months down the road? Well, approximately.
In, in, in response to Senator McClair's question, you know, as an alternative, I mean, the, and the examples, and I don't want to address all of them, but I think the one that you picked where it talked about phone ringing and three people deep, I think that was more of an example. It wasn't exist, not to portray the existing condition, but that certainly could happen at any one time when you have a single individual at the counter. We do answer the phone, I answer the phone, we don't let it ring, we, we service the people as best we can. Oftentimes though, other people are either in meetings, out of the office, out in the field. So sometimes there is only one person there and that does happen and, and it's unavoidable, but it's because people are out doing what they're supposed to be doing. Alternatively, if the position is not going to be filled, I would like to explore city manager looking at alternate, uh, public work hours. That maybe we simply close the office for certain periods of time to the public so that we can ensure that we get the job that needs to get done, done. I mean, that is the concern. We, we did not want to cut back the public service at the counter and, but that is the problem. It's not having sufficient staff at that front office to be able to, one, service them the way they want to be serviced. It's, to me, it would be inefficient, I agree, that we have to look at a backup for the computer system. People can get on there, but to issue a permit that would normally take ten minutes, takes about forty-five minutes. And it's simply because of familiarity. Unless you do something all the time, it, it just doesn't, it just doesn't work. So I, I think looking at maybe cutting back some of the public hours, that may be a possibility to ensure that we can get things done when they need to get done. And it's mainly going to be through the lunch hours. The only other days are going to be when people are on vacation, we'll simply, we would have to deal with that. I would like the ability to bring this back, like you said, in December, when the numbers come in, to, to reevaluate, uh, filling this position. Because I, I do believe it is critical, we have worked very hard to improve the customer service at that department. The council in the past has been somewhat critical, you know, and there have been individuals who have complained that, you know, you can't get your permits over the counter. And we've worked very, very diligently to overcome those issues. I hate to see a step back.
No, I agree, and like I said in my opening comments, what was lacking in this report was, this is what we'd like, but we realize council may not support it. And if they don't, here's our next course of action. There is no next course of action. So I would welcome a north next course. I would suggest, and again, just coming from how businesses where I work get run, in the duties, somebody runs the mail and goes to the bank and solicitors a forty-five minute activity. First thing I would do is say, no one in this department does that anymore, we don't have a person who has time to go to the bank. And tell Mr. Anderson, you need someone else, this is an entire city, this isn't just your department. Somebody else in this city can bring you your mails, that's what it takes. So I'm looking for more creative, not just that we have to keep this employee because that's who goes and gets our mail, so.
But one of the challenges they're going to have though is they'll be down three, so they're going to have to have three courses of action for the three positions.
I know, but the challenge Gilroy has is they're down a sixth of their entire workforce, I don't want to be Gilroy.
No, I understand, but you need to read the Gilroy report a little more and just figure out how they got there because they're self-imposed through their general fund through bonding and they, they pledged ten million dollars of their general fund and it didn't come through and that's why they're in such a, such a bond.
I agree, so Kurt, I will welcome to hear back from you in December.
It probably won't be December, I don't think you're going to have the, the numbers you're looking for probably until into January.
We will receive in advance in December, but the actual reports that we'll receive will probably follow sometime in January. So I understand that you do want that information, but I'm sure that Kurt will be anxious to fill the position and December will not be the date that we will have the, the information.
And, and with that, I think that it would be to the council's best benefit, probably in, in the middle of January, we will come back with a special session on the fiscal oh nine and fiscal ten budget. We'll go through where we're at on oh nine, we'll talk about ten and we'll analyze where we're at in totality at that point in time.
In January, Ted?
Yeah, probably be around the, the middle of January.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Ted, do you foresee us doing any layoffs, part-time or anything throughout the city at this point?
Let me say this in all honesty, for about three weeks, it seems like everybody that I've come around, that I've met in the, or was wishing that the city was worse off than it is. I think you should feel very fortunate that we're where we're at. Now, does that mean are we going to be immune to changes in the future? Probably not. But we're not in the dire straits that some of our neighbors are. What we're trying to do is be proactive and try and stay on top of it so that we don't get there, if at all possible. I think we're quite a ways from layoffs. But what we will do is we'll cut back on some of the part-time and some of the other things and we will try and maintain the total full-time people as long as we can. We will continue our process and we'll also have departments identify which positions, if we got to that point, would be more susceptible to layoff than others, based upon their importance to the city.
One other thing I think is not clear, how many employees do we have in that building, in the building planning department? We have more than three people in that, in that building.
Well, you, you also have all of public works upstairs and I don't have a, I don't have a count on, on-
No, I was just thinking, for example, Darrell mentioned picking up the mail or something like that. It seems like whoever's picking up the mail or delivering the mail for public works could, you know, combine-
Certainly.
So I, I guess the point I'm trying to make is if we look at it really, really, really well, we might find some ways that we can make this work without closing the office.
Well, I, I, I still think that we're, we are going to have periods of time where I think that would be advantageous to, to do that. But there are other things that we can look at in cooperation with public works. And that is certainly one that, that would work well in the morning.
Yeah, I think we have enough, I have enough faith in the employees that we can make the best of this if we just, you know, put our heads together and try to work it out.
If there is no other choice, that's what we will do.
Kurt, you and I, I called you and discussed this very issue with you. And in our discussion, I had mentioned possible cross-training and you had mentioned that that was something that you were, you were looking at, is that correct?
Well, we, there is a certain level of, of training now that, that, that goes on, but it is, again, because the inspectors are in the field, they don't issue permits, they're not on that system all the time. Kathy in my office can issue a permit, but it's, it's not perfect and it takes a long time. And when she's doing that, she's not doing the other duties that, that she's picked up the slack because we're down a planner. So she's actually doing, doing activities which a planner does. So I mean, there, we've already made a lot of shifts internally within the office to this point because of a shortage. But to answer your question, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll do what we have to do.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't think what Councilman Claire's asking is how reasonable and I would agree to bring this back. And when we have more facts, because I think, I think we got a lot of issues facing us and I think we got to follow suit, it's, you know, much looking like the rest of the country. So I think we need to be very cautious in our, in our decision-making, so I'll agree with you on that.
To Barbara's question, because I just tried to do a head count of who I thought was in your department, so tell me if I'm missing anyone. Yourself, the building official, one administrative assistant, one principal planner, one associate planner, one interim building official, who is or isn't still there, I'm not sure what-
Senior, he's the senior, so he leaves December twelve.
Okay. A building inspector, a code enforcement officer, and now just one building permit specialist.
Correct.
Is there anyone I didn't?
I don't think so, that's it.
So we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten people.
That's correct.
Okay. And I will, I think I said before, I'll, I'll move at this time that we not adopt the, the recommendation of staff and do not hire a physician at this time and direct the staff to bring this back to our review late December, early January. and do not hire a position at this time and direct staff to bring this back to our review late December, early January when they have the budget numbers we've discussed.
I'll second it.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye. Vote seven, three, zero. Um, next one is community development department. Well, wait, I gotta come back. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just would like to verify one question there, uh, as far as the commercial permits versus remodels for a housing permit. In my memo to Ted, I made a point that the steps are all similar from an administrative point of view. I know that you think that a commercial permit's more extensive. Well, not in the issuance and running to get a permit. From inspections and plan check, yes, but that's not the job function of a permit specialist. It is taking the plans, routing the plans, tracking them, make sure their, their content is accurate to detail. It's the very same regardless whether it's commercial, industrial. It's not the size of, of, of the dollar amount of the project. It's the same for permit specialists for that work. It's only different for the inspectors and plan checkers.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And the next, uh, issue is the community development department. Subject is the Galt Place, mixed use and affordable senior housing and sca- uh, staff report Kurt Campion.
Uh, thank you. Um, members of council, members of the public, this item, um, we brought it back to you most recently at your October twenty-first meeting, um, to get additional direction, uh, from the city council redevelopment agency, uh, to staff and to work with the applicant, uh, based on the, um, resubmital of, uh, financing through the, uh, tax credit program for the Galt senior place, project. Um, if you recall initially, uh, there had been a request for a two and a half million dollar loan from the city's redevelopment agency to assist in this, uh, senior project, um, located downtown. That was approved by council last, early this year. Uh, the applicant made a request through the tax credit board. The first request did not get funded. The second request, which we found out, uh, about August first of this year, did not get funded, but it made the, it was first runner-up, so to speak. Um, uh, since that time, and we indicated at the October twenty-first meeting, any other funded programs that fell out by the deadline, this would be the first one to go up. Um, or alternatively, um, Mr. Yosefi indicated that he had another project that he would pull from the funded list in order to, to allow this project to go forward. In any case, the project has been funded. Unfortunately, with changes in the economic climate, uh, the applicant has requested, had requested an additional one point five million dollars to be loaned from the redevelopment agency for a total of four million for this project. Reasons for that, uh, were identified in the last report, but the federal, uh, tax credits are selling for less money. Originally, they were estimated at about ninety cents on the dollar. They're now estimated at about eighty-two cents on the dollar. So, that increased the cost to the project applicant and therefore the need for additional funding. Additionally, they were required to have bonds put up, which were not required in the past, and they had to maintain a construction reserve according to their lender. So, these were all additional costs that have added up to the, the additional, uh, rec- or the additional monies for the, for the loan. Um, the, the, the documents before you are, are in two areas. One is on the city council, uh, uh, agenda and that would be, uh, authorization for the city council to lend money from the city. Uh, that would be approximately seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars, uh, from Fund Thirty-One to the redevelopment agency. Um, the redevelopment ag- agency has about seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars available in fund balance and they got the one point five million additional. The other, the prior two and a half has already been funded in the budget. Uh, the way the loan documents are structured, the redevelopment agency would repay the loans to the city according to the life insurance rate over a ten-year period. So, all of those, all of those documents are attached to the report. Um, one item I would like to point out, I believe it is in the resolution, but the, the, the city had agreed to defer collection of the capital impact fees to the, uh, certificate of occupancy. That was in the prior agreement. Uh, and that would be for the fees that are in effect today. I just want to make that clear that, um, those fees may be adjusted, uh, if the city increases those fees. The calculation on the loan and the overall program cost is based on today's rates. I would recommend that we leave it at that rate. Otherwise, in all likelihood, the applicant would be requesting additional monies based on the increase in the capital impact fees. Um, with that, that concludes my report. Unless there are any questions, uh, by council.
A couple.
Go ahead.
Uh, it says here that this seven hundred and eleven thousand would come from Fund Thirty-One.
That is correct.
Which is the northeast area impact fees.
Yes.
Uh, if we take that money from that fund, what do we, what are we missing?
It is a loan and I believe there are suffi- sufficient funds in there to where all capital projects can still be funded, uh, with re- the remaining fund balance. And I believe it was like ten million or eleven million dollars.
What was your mark for that, uh, money?
There's a whole host of projects. I don't know.
There's water improvements. There's some, uh, storage tanks out there that are going to be constructed in the next couple of years. There's some sewer improvement. There's landscaping, roadways. It's part of, part of the money goes towards, um, future twin cities interchange. I mean, it's a list a mile long of, of different things, although, um, most of the programs and projects that we have within the five years, that's the one fund that we have where there's more money. There's sufficient funds in order to do all the projects that we have over the next five years. That's why we chose Fund Thirty-One, because there's no risk of those projects not moving forward because there's sufficient funds in there. All the other projects, all the other funds that we have are pretty well tapped out. We have, we, we know how much money we have and all the projects we have are using every, every dime of those funds that we have available. That's one fund where we have ex- excess funds, at least in the, in the near future, in the five-year CIP that we anticipated. We're not going to be needing those funds over that time horizon.
Okay. So, you're telling me that we're not going to have to delay anything that we have planned for the next five years?
That's correct.
Will this, would this be repaid within?
Ten years is the repayment schedule.
It's, it's likely that, that it will be fund- refunded sooner. Um, we gave ourselves ten years to fund it back. Um, but the estimates as far as Fund Ninety revenue coming in, staff anticipates that we should be able to pay it off a lot sooner than that ten years.
My other question is, um, and I guess it would be to you. Do you feel like there is still a strong market for senior housing? I know driving into, uh, Elk Grove on, I believe it's Bruceville, they've just completed a huge affordable housing, uh, for seniors project. So, I'm, I guess I'm asking you, do you still feel like it's a viable project? Okay. And what are you basing that on? Maybe you could come up to the. I, I guess I'd like you to convince me of that.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
My name is Cyrus Yosefi, one zero zero six, Fourth Street, Sacramento. Uh, very strong market study for Galt.
And how do you know that?
I beg pardon.
How do you know that? Did you do a survey?
The market study, the market study was required by the tax credit committee.
And when was that done?
Uh, that was done earlier this year when we submitted for the first application. And, uh, the credit committee, uh, they had their own staff that they take your independent market study and then they evaluate it. And that's one of the criterias for allocating the credit.
Okay.
Uh, I'm familiar with the Elk Grove. That, uh, Elk Grove is also very strong markets, especially rental these days. Very strong.
Okay. Thank you for convincing me.
Globe, Globe Mills, hundred and twelve seniors apartment from, uh, we started May twenty-eighth renting. Hundred and four of them are already rented.
Where is that project?
You were.
Is that the one that Elk Grove?
Fourth, Fourth and Se, Sacramento.
Okay.
Uh, they're one bedroom. Here we have one bedroom and two bedroom. They're twenty percent two-bedroom.
Okay.
Uh, it's a, it's the largest growing market right now. The seniors, about fifty-five, who are pretty much on the fixed income.
Okay. Well, I very much want this project, but I, I have to be.
Been a labor of love and, uh,
Conservative.
and heartache for the last year.
Thank you. That's my question.
You've made a lot of sacrifice to get to this point, haven't you? I know you gave up another project.
It's, uh, it's been very, very difficult, uh, uh, market with all the, uh, we never thought that tax credit because of the nature of the industry would be affected, but what's happening, you know, in the United States. But clearly, tax credit has been also, uh, affected. Makes the projects are much more difficult to do. We were very fortunate to get the credit. The credit's the greatest asset. And, uh, uh, but, uh, you, everybody has to sacrifice to make it happen. It's as simple as that.
Well, it's going to be a good project with money tightening up and the harder it's getting to, to get this type of funding. So, you've got a good project on your hands and I look forward to seeing it move forward with our, within our community. So, I thank you.
Thank you.
Um, a couple of other, just quick notes. Um, it's indicated in the report, under the original agreement, the, the loan, uh, from the project applicant to the redevelopment agency was to start repayment at year twelve. It will be year sixteen now due to the financing rearrangements. Um, and they would like to close on the property by the end of the year. So, we, they would be advancing about two point two million dollars, uh, to purchase the property before the end of the year in order to, because you want to start in April, is it April?
Uh, when we got the allocation, uh, basically we got the allocation, official letter, I think it was last Thursday. Uh, from the day that you get the allocation of the tax credit, you have one hundred and fifty days to start your construction. That means by the hundred and fifty days, you have to have your permit, you have to have your general contractor on site, and you have to have all your other financing in place. Otherwise, the tax credit committee will recapture the allocation. It's a very, very onerous deadline. Uh, the hundred and fifty days is April fourteenth. So, by April fourteenth, we have to have the permit, the construction loan, the general contractor, and for all practical purposes, you have to start the construction. Uh, we are hoping to take the property down sometime in December, uh, this Friday, subject to your approval. This Friday, uh, at nine o'clock, there is a meeting set up with, uh, our engineers and, uh, the city of Galt, uh, building department to go over the design and all the other related issue to be ready for that April fourteenth date.
And your project has, what, seventy-five hundred square feet of, uh, retail underneath it too as well? So, that's going to bring.
That's correct.
That's going to be another asset to the community and I really look forward to seeing that come in as well.
That's correct. We are, we are going to try to, uh, uh, this is one of the very few projects that, uh, I have done that we are going to try to get a restaurant to that location. Typically, uh, our, uh, retails are very, uh, uh, sort of blends with our housing. Restaurant is sort of more, uh, business oriented, if I can use that word, rather than the beauty shop or those type of, uh, activities. But specifically, between three to five thousand square foot, a large part of our, uh, commercial is going to be aimed at, uh, uh, having a restaurant, hopefully, a name restaurant, uh, chain, uh, to come to Galt, yeah.
I'd be very much welcome, let me tell you. Just, we're always hearing, everybody wants a nice place to sit down, have a nice dinner. You know, because we get a lot of fast food. We don't have a lot of nice sit-down restaurants and that's something we, we dearly need. So, that would be something that we most certainly welcome.
That would be our target.
Well, we hope you, we hit, we hope you hit that target.
If I may, while you're here, I think I mentioned to you before about some of the potential of rail development through the center of our.
Yes, you did.
community. And to everybody first, if you don't know, the high-speed rail bond was passed and that will begin at least the process of perhaps high-speed rail in our, in our state. Whether it'll be in our community or not is a long way off, but that's begun. But, uh, also earlier this year, the San Joaquin Board of Supervisors appointed me as their representative on the San Joaquin Valley Rail Commission. And I was already serving on the advisory committee, looking at getting an ACE-type train commute service from Stockton to Sacramento. So, I hosted a meeting on behalf of that new commission I'm, uh, overseeing now. Uh, in Sacramento, we had forty-some-odd individuals from all the city governments throughout the Central Valley and into the Bay Area that Amtrak and the Capital Corridor train service as well as ACE train. And so, our city is being looked at for a potential rail stop in the future for commuter rail. Now, the future in rail, anybody knows that, is five or ten years. It's not soon. But I am glad to report that we are progressing. It is a topic of discussion. And what we would hope to do is there would be a commuter rail station, give or take a block of your property. And people here could drive, park downtown, get on the train, especially those who work in Sacramento.
I'd love it.
And just take the, the train into Sacramento. And surprisingly, we already have agreement, or conceptual agreement, um, from Amtrak who now stops in Elk Grove. And I, I introduced, I noted Jason out there, if I did, Ted, Lee Greenwood, who was here from Caltra- or Caltrans, the Amtrak division. And I guess there's some reason to believe that Elk Grove would be willing to give up their Amtrak stop to get the shorter-range commuter service, because their people could just get on that service in Elk Grove and go the short distance to the Amtrak station in Sacramento and then go anywhere in the United States from there. So, they'd move the Amtrak to the west on the, uh, line that's west of us and bring the commuter service right through Stockton, Lodi, Galt, Elk Grove, and into Sacramento. So, I'll keep you posted. It's, it's a long process to ever get here, but I am glad to report that it seems to be moving in our direction.
Great. Thank you very much.
You bet.
So, do we have a motion? With that, I'd be glad to move it. Um, I think this project still, as we've said before, could be the impetus to a lot of redevelopment in the downtown area benefiting the people who are already there and some of them are here tonight who have hung on and are waiting for more foot traffic down there. And, uh, and I, I hope it, it meets all those expectations. So, I'll move staff's recommendation.
Do we need two, um, motions on this or just one?
There's one for the city council and then later there'll be a second one for the redevelopment agency.
Then I'll second it.
Okay. Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three, zero. And we'll adjourn to the redevelopment agency at this time. Uh, Donna, can you, uh, call roll?
Payne.
Here.
Payne, here. Claire.
Here.
Raboy, Meredith.
Okay. Any public comments?
No.
All right. Uh, information, the consent, uh, agenda, move the agenda?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three, zero agendas. Uh, recommendations that the board will approve, the consent, blah, 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 department report. Community Development Department, uh, just as we've already discussed, Galt Place, mixed use and affordable senior housing project. Kurt Campion, did you, we've already talked about it. Did you want to mention anything else? Nothing else. Uh, any comments by, uh, council?
No comment.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three, zero. And we'll, uh, adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council. City clerks report.
Uh, we have a few things up until the, the next meeting of, um, the city council. There's a committee on aging on November twentieth. The beautification committee meets also on November twentieth. The commission on aging meeting is, has been canceled. It was going to be November twenty-seventh. The city offices will be closed November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth for Thanksgiving holiday. The youth committee is meeting on December first, and that brings us to the next city council meeting on December second.
Thank you. Comments by staff?
Actually, just have one. As council is aware, uh, the fixed route transit services will be, are being terminated. Uh, Wednesday, November twenty-sixth will be the last day that those fixed routes are offered. We are going to continue with the dollar ride service. People that have questions can contact South County Transit at seven four five three zero five two or Public Works at three six six seven two six zero.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Another one, Mr. Mayor, uh, there will be a funeral here Thursday afternoon. We're notifying most of our departments to please not come over here in the afternoon if we can help it because of the traffic at the Chaboah Center. If you know anyone, you may make that same recommendation to them, but we would like to know. People, we will be open for business, but we, but we anticipate that there will be a lot of parking issues Thursday afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Comments by council? I guess I'll go first on this one. I want to mention a couple of things. First and foremost, Measure R looks very promising. Uh, we're about two percent above what's expected to make it pass. All we're really waiting for at this time is to make sure it gets certified. We're expecting it will be certified by the first of December, so for those of you who haven't been following it, and I'm sure most everybody has, this is, uh, looks very excellent, and this is going to be a funding that's much needed at a good time, so I'm very proud of this. And, uh, I want to say, not to be too premature, but I want to thank everybody who's participated. Uh, Chief Al Baldwin, uh, council support, Darryl Clare, you know, I mean, this has been big, and it's a big feather in our cap for a community, because there's a lot of other communities that couldn't get a measure passed, and we did this. And, uh, and we'll have it certified by the first, and we'll have more to say in the next meeting.
Yep, I was going to say, before you get off of that, I want to say for all of us, nobody did more work than you, and I know you're not looking to get that kind of recognition, but the simple fact is, nobody walked like you walked and put in the hours you put in, and I understand you had to get reacquainted and your children forgot what you look like, but, um, I would like if everybody'd give him a round of applause, because he was, he was support.
I appreciate that, Darryl. And in addition to it, we have, our rent control issue for our mobile home parks is still up. We're going to be meeting with the, uh, mobile home park owners here very shortly about the first of December. Sorry to have that put that off with so many other things. Uh, in addition to that, um, the Galt Community Against Crime, our Yes on Our Measure Committee, there's been enough interest that they would like to continue to work as an organization within the community to move forward and address the other issues in which we could reduce crime in the community. And some of the things that we're going to be working as an organization is we're going to be addressing, uh, things, for example, in some of the higher, in some of the areas of Galt, uh, where some of the crime is a little bit higher. Um, we want to start, uh, we want to make it a little easier for our police officers to do their job. So one of the things we're going to be looking to do is to possibly stencil in front of the homes, the addresses, because if you go in downtown, in that downtown area as well, but in some of the older parts of Galt, you can't find an address, especially at night, much less during the day, because there's either not a house address up, out there for you to see, or, and this is very dangerous for our police officers too, so, especially at night. I did a drive, ride along with one of our officers here about a week and a half ago, and it's kind of a scary thought, but when these guys go into these neighborhoods, especially, uh, you know, of a shooting or whatever the case may be, and they may have an address, but sometimes they could roll up into a bad situation, because they can't identify one house from the next, uh, as far as addresses go. So what we want to do is be able to identify this, make it a little bit more friendly or that way. So, uh, we're going to try to get the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, we're going to be working with them to get those addresses stenciled out on the street. In addition to it, we're going to be working together as a committee, one of the things we want to do is that many of the neighborhoods, the older neighborhoods, they don't have any porch lights, they don't have any floodlights. Uh, we need to get those places lit up, because one of the easiest ways to deter crime is by turning your lights on. And if you don't have any lights, you have nothing to turn on, so that's another thing that we're going to be addressing. And one of the other issues has been an old issue, uh, that we're going to be looking at, and it's going to be a little bit more difficult to achieve, but we're definitely going to be looking at is the lighting from the street lighting in those areas. They're absolutely horrible, and I do mean horrible. There's nothing worse, I, I would hate to have to live in that community where you drive down the road, there didn't even enough light to see the streets in front of you. And that's why these areas are hit so hard with crime, because there's no exposure, and they can hide in the dark very easily. So as a group, we've agreed that we're going to be moving forward. Those are three of the things that we're going to be initially targeting as well as others. And, uh, we're going to be very much against crime, but we're going to be proactive on those issues, and we're going to be able to work well together, because this Measure R has really brought together a fine group of people. And I'm talking about people from the school board, I'm talking about people from the chamber. We've got collectively, uh, the best group of people you could hope to have to work together in addressing these issues. So I just want to put that out there. We're going to be working in active, and we'll be bringing ideas to the council. Um, uh, Councilman Clare, you had something under yours?
Do you want to do Barbara first?
Barbara didn't have anything?
I did have something.
Do you? Okay, I'm sorry, there's nothing listed here. Go right ahead, Barbara.
Um, just wanted to mention the meeting that we did have on the unmet transit needs. Had a really good turnout, um, as well as some letters from the schools for needs, which we have sent on to SACOG. Um, I would share with you that there was a, a concern about doing away with the fixed routes, and I'm sure there have been some letters and emails sent to SACOG expressing their, their concerns. Um, as well as the schools, they had some needs that we passed on to SACOG, but hopefully, um, SACOG, and we're fortunate enough to have a council member that has them pulled there, will, uh, take those very seriously. Uh, the other thing that I would share with you, I attended the Metro Chamber luncheon, which was a report card for the county of Sacramento, and I think, um, you probably know that the county has their problems just like the states and the federal people as well. But it also included a forum on economic development, and they had, um, a good group on the forum. Brian Crabbe is Director of Government Affairs of Optis Solar, he was very interesting. Uh, Jurgen Wilder, Vice President of, uh, Sessman, Sessman, Alan Hirsch from McClellan Park, and Rob Leonard, Economic Development of Sacramento County. And some of the things that they shared with us, if we want more economic development in our town, and I know we do, uh, some of the points they made was, um, don't say no. There's ninety-nine percent chance that you can find an answer to make these projects happen if you, um, if you have the right attitude. And it was suggested that you treat each project like you're on a commission, and if the project doesn't happen, then you don't get paid. Um, and they also mentioned that businesses talk to businesses. Uh, if you want to attract retail or industry, you want businesses to say good things about your community. Um, they talked a little bit about the new trauma center at Kaiser and the light rail which you mentioned, and, um, solar ranches, that's the thing for the future. It was very interesting, and hopefully I did some networking where we might have some opportunities for our community. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, the, the item I listed I'm going to pass on tonight, I know the council's going to be this light, so I'll perhaps touch on it at a future meeting. Um, I did want to, I'm sorry, Tim isn't here tonight, I want to take a minute to congratulate Tim on all he's done. I think this ain't a big secret, he and I disagreed on a lot of issues, but nobody researched an item more than Tim, if Tim wanted to research an item. All of us, I think, can remember times he'd come in here with, you know, stacked this high of things, and he had a passion for things, the sprinklers probably a good example as any. Um, I know he's given up a lot of time as the speaker who spoke early, his family and his children, and most people know he has a number of small children, and, uh, so he started on our planning commission before he moved to the city council, and did a lot, put in a lot, gave up a lot. Um, so I certainly want to acknowledge all the work he's done for the community. Anyone who's sat up here and had to leave either as a result of just life situations or the outcome of an election, uh, it, it's not easy, and, and I know that, uh, you know, there's got to be a hole in his heart right now, because I think we all know how much he cared about the work he was doing here. So when I see him in person, I'll say the same, but, uh, to him and to the work he's done in our community, he, he deserves to be thanked. So, uh, I wish, wish he'd been here tonight, so we could have done it more appropriately, but that was his choice.
I agree, and it has been a pleasure working with him on the council the last few years, but anybody who knows Tim knows Tim ain't going away. Tim will find something to occupy his time, I mean, it's in his blood, so we'll be hearing from him.
If I could, in his honor, for one last time though, give the police report on Grid Twenty? Absolutely. This was one of his favorite things. Grid Twenty is property bounded by Orr, Sergeant Harvey, and the railroad tracks. And thus far this year, the things I think he would have pointed out is, unfortunately, there have been seven auto burglar, or seventeen auto burglaries in that area this year, thirty-seven thefts, and thirty-six vandalisms. And hopefully, with the voters recently passing Measure R and assuming it holds, and I think it will, I agree, we will have more folks, and the chief will have more folks to try and knock some of that down, because that's what it's all about, so.
And Mayor Meredith isn't here tonight, and the reason he's not here is simply he wanted me to let you know he's celebrating his anniversary. I didn't, I didn't ask him which one it was, but he, he said it was not a day he could miss, if he wanted to be back home another day, so. Uh, having said that, uh, we'll adjourn. And I think we set a record, Darryl.